I'd be happy to listen and just stand by till then.
If you want to do it that way, that would be great.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right. We will go ahead and get started with our Tuesday, July 21st board meeting. Start off with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Annabelle Conamiel, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vash Korni, County Council.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Dan O'Gallagher, Commissioner. George Lee, Public Work.
Reese Farland, Board Commissioner.
Barry Nish, Department.
Matt Leatherall, General Department.
Andy Adlet, Department.
Danielle Brownhouse, Department.
Kate Porsha, Corvallis County Economic Department Office.
Laurie Starhop, Benton County Natural Resources Park.
Laurie Starhop, Benton County Natural Resources and Parks.
John Assan, Number of the Public.
Jennifer Ward, Natural Resources and Parks.
Gary Stock, Public Works.
Lee Hamill, District Attorney's Office.
John Harold, District Attorney's Office.
Mariottley, Finance.
Jen Ambule, Finance.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioners.
Tony Gacho, Self-Advocate on the Board Directors for the Arc of Benton County.
All right. Well, I think that's everybody or close to everybody. Are there any announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay. Item number three, review and approve the agenda. I have one change. I would like to remove item 6.2 from the consent agenda and put it at, we'll call it 8.5 under new business. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Agenda is approved. There have been no chair decisions from our last meeting. And item number five, work sessions. EOC update. We have Brian Lee, Charlie Fountain, Danielle, and then probably last with financial, we'll have George Looney. So it seems like usually Brian goes first, but it's up to you folks.
Sure. I'll save time and just volunteer myself. I'll go first. So, good morning, everyone. Couple minor updates on the EOC side. We are here physically at the EOC again, and we're going to be here for two days a week for possibly the next two to three weeks. And the main thing is just to clean up some loose ends and make sure the Health Department Operations Center is rolling smoothly and on a good schedule and cycle. And to facilitate coordination a little bit better, we've been having some communication issues. You know, repeat meetings, cyclical discussions that can be solved by a quick dialogue face to face. So we have that going. We also have a ton of new safety protocol. Masks are required in the EOC now, which they were before, but now we're making sure everyone's wearing them no matter what, as well as additional cleaning protocol that we're going through. And we're keeping our numbers here down to, I think there's only seven people here today. Other than that, we are going to draft out our Department Operations Center support structure. And we are still coordinating the face covering distribution plan. We're looking at probably a little bit mid-first week to mid-August to get that out to the community, but we still are moving forward with that. And then we have some EOC training and tabletop exercises to coordinate with Matt Morrie to get our other EOC teams ready to go in case we keep getting surges. That's my high-level summary.
Okay. Brian, is this physical EOC on Tuesdays and Thursdays going to continue for the foreseeable future?
We're hoping to near-market for two to three weeks and then see where we're at. Again, thinking about our parameters that we had established previously for reactivation, we really want to make sure we have enough objectives to justify us being in the same building together and coordinating things. So we're really, really, really focused on objectives and what we're here to accomplish. And if there's not enough here to do, we want to send people back to their normal work environment. And again, making sure all the safety protocol are in place to keep everyone safe and healthy.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Brian?
Not for me.
Okay. Next up, Danielle or Charlie?
Sure, I can go next. Thanks, Commissioner. So to go a little bit further on what Brian was talking about, the face covering, we're doing that kind of in a phased approach where we split it between what economic development is going to be doing for businesses, what public health is going to be doing in terms of supporting and coordinating with community-based organizations, and what emergency management is going to be doing to support community.
We lost you, Danielle.
To support that distribution throughout the communities, including all of the rural communities, so not just within the Corvallis area. The other update that we're working on this week at the EOC is we've been getting a lot of communication around Pioneer Park and the homeless encampments at Pioneer Park. So we're going to begin to actively work on how to better support those individuals and what we're going to do in terms of managing those homeless encampments at Pioneer Park and in other city park locations. Finally, the other thing that we're focusing on this week is supporting the contact tracing and the communicable disease team. As you can all likely imagine with the increase in cases and the ongoing work, the communicable disease team is feeling a little bit fried. So we're working on creating a support plan for how to help those individuals feel a little bit less worn thin and provide a little bit of extra support for the communicable disease team in order to continue to meet the contact tracing metric that was determined by the state.
All right. Any questions for Danielle? Zan?
With respect to Pioneer Park, are there some particular strategies? I'm assuming you're working closely with Paul Valada and with others from the city to figure out how best to approach the situation?
Yes, absolutely. And we're also working, we've had some communication with Joel Goodwin from the CPD and with the Fire Marshal Jeff Preschall to work as a collaborative across city and county.
Yeah, I know that fires in particular are the major concern at this point in time, given fire risks. And thank you.
Yes.
All right. I think you're up, Charlie.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We don't have this morning's numbers in quite yet. Team is still compiling overnight numbers. So as of yesterday, we have 110 confirmed positive tests since the beginning of this in Benton County. If you look at the OHA website, they show 128. The difference there, again, as always, is state includes presumptive cases, and we are just counting laboratory test positive cases. And so therein lies the difference between those two. But looking at state numbers, Benton County, we're still doing relatively well. You know, sort of an island in the lower end of the incidence rate statewide. Statewide, Oregon has 35 cases per 10,000 overall. We're at 13.6 cases per 10,000. That puts us down in about the bottom quartile of counties in the state. Overall, in the state, 4% of all tests are positive. In Benton County, at this point, 2% have been positive. So, you know, the difference there is generally the really massive focal outbreaks in places like Umatilla, Mount Hira, Union County, Lincoln County. These small population areas with large focal outbreaks that really sort of skew the data in those counties. So far, those have not touched us, but, you know, we watch very, very closely. I think we've been fortunate up to this time. We were just talking about wildfire risk, and I think that is how this outbreak is progressing. And that's what I hear from the national and international epidemiologists, that this, by the more we learn about this virus, the more we understand that it is behaving like a coronavirus and not like a flu virus. And some of our original ideas about sort of the wave pattern may not be true, that this is an opportunistic virus that does operate like a wildfire, throwing out sparks, and wherever it finds fuel, it will take off. And I think that's what we're seeing in the southern U.S., that's what we're seeing in some of these rural counties. And unfortunately, we are all the fuel. And, you know, just trying to hold off opportunities for these super-spreader events that really ignite sustained community transmission. On the public health side, we're continuing to work very, very actively with Oregon State University, meet with them on a very regular basis, executive meetings once a week, liaison discussions every day. Their resumption plan is posted on their website. They are monitoring both statewide and local epidemiology very closely and adapting their plans on a continuing basis to those local circumstances in all of their campus sites and all of their extension sites, but with a particular focus, of course, on Benton County because it's their largest. We're also working really actively now with all the schools. They have an August 15th deadline from Department of Education to get their resumption plans filed. This has been a bit of a moving target for both the schools and for public health. As we discussed before, these reviews were a mandate that came unexpectedly to public health. And so we had to scramble to identify capacity to do, these are 16 to 18-page documents for every school. We have 38 schools in the county, so it is kind of a massive piece of work that we had to scramble to find staff and train people up to do these reviews. And now the process is actually in some revision because unfortunately, local public health was not at the table when the original criteria were created. And so when we got a chance to look at some of the expectations that were drawn up by OHA and Department of Ed really were not appropriate, or in some cases, not even correct for the way communicable disease investigation and control is done at a local level. So CLO stepped in. We've got CLO members on those boards now. And there are some adaptations going on with those expectations. But that makes the whole process a bit of a moving target for the schools and for local public health departments. But we're making good progress on that, and our schools are being really receptive and very active in building that. So I think that's about it from my side. Happy to answer questions.
Charlie, I have a question. This is Annabelle.
Sure.
We saw the charts from last week. How frequently are these put out? I think you know which chart I'm talking about, the public health indicators chart?
They are posted every Thursday. We get the data the Wednesday afternoon before. Yeah, it's, that is not a surprise. We've been sort of bouncing up and down on that. You know, some of our biggest challenges there are, as we have had more and more cases in younger and younger people, the lack of response when we call people to do those case investigations. A lot of people around the state are experiencing this, and I actually think a big piece of it is a function of age and generation that a lot of younger folks actually, you know, sort of seems odd to some of us dinosaurs, but they don't use their telephones to talk with. And so when they get a call from an unknown number, they don't answer. If it's not a recognized, we try to text, we try to let them know who we are, but it's very challenging to get ahold of folks. So that is, that's one of the choke points in that. And the other is just volume and fatigue and just the time it takes to get ahold of people. And as Danielle pointed out, we're making some efforts now and worked through with Joe yesterday to add some capacity that will help alleviate some of the fatigue and burnout and increase the amount of time we have available to do those reach-outs.
Yeah, a follow-up question. How frequently do they put out these assessments, like with this one we got last week?
Once a week. They're posted every Thursday. Yes.
Yeah, I think you said that in the beginning. I just wanted to be sure I heard it right.
Okay.
Yes.
Zan?
I also have a question, and it has more to do about the role of the current delays in getting test results and how much that is also confounding the contact tracing process. And just because people are in even longer state of uncertainty. And what are we, what are we potentially able to do about it?
Excellent question, Commissioner. You know, when we get over three days with lab turnaround, it becomes a real problem, asking people to sit tight after a test until they have their results becomes much, much more challenging for most people and most households. After 48 hours and after 72 hours, it's really difficult to expect people to act as though they are isolated when they just don't know. We monitor this on a regular basis. I just got the stats this morning. And so we're varying, we have four laboratories that are the primary ones used by all our medical systems here. And the, this past week, the return times vary from an average of eight-day turnaround to two-day turnaround. And so overall, our average of the four labs is a bit over five days. State public health lab is by far the fastest. Private labs are a little slower. It's quite variable from week to week and lab to lab. If, you know, this is complex equipment and machinery to do these RNA tests, and the equipment has to be taken down and maintained on a regular basis to maintain accuracy. And if a machine goes down for a couple of days just for routine maintenance, things back up fast with the demand. So a lab can have, you know, basically a faster turnaround one week and slower the next week. But yeah, right now, you know, we're down, the week before, we were over six-day average turnaround. Now we're just over five days this week. We actually don't have, there's not a lot we can control in that.
I do understand that the clinic is considering purchasing a couple of machines of their own because they are having such trouble with the delays of up to 10 days in getting test results.
Yes.
So if we have funds available, it certainly seems that that might be an option, although I understand that the reagents are a huge part of the problem and that supply chain won't be fixed by having a machine.
Right. Some of this stuff, particularly the reagents, this is a national problem. You know, these are, these are situations that particularly with their two largest private labs, LabCorp and Quest, which are national. And when they have one lab go down, then those lab results may have to go, you know, to Nebraska or to Oklahoma instead of being done more regionally. And that delays things nationally for them. And then the supply chain of reagents and the maintenance materials for these, for this equipment is a real choke point. So again, not a lot of local control. Additional local testing capacity could add something, but it's sort of like whack-a-mole. You solve one problem and something pops up somewhere else. But it is a huge issue. It's going to be really hard. It just, it's sort of, when you start getting up around seven or eight-day turnaround in tests or more, it pretty much negates the effectiveness of contact tracing. You know, by that time, the number of contacts in the circle that you identified, people can't remember that far back.
Yeah.
And things have just spread so widely by that point. It makes it very challenging to box in any of those cases and do that local control. That's certainly what has contributed to some of the large focal outbreaks.
Gee, I wish you were more optimistic, but I understand.
I wish I had a magic wand and could just turn them all into two-day turnarounds.
I understand Willamette Valley Toxicology is still one of the better labs, but, you know, maybe they just aren't getting as much volume. So, yeah, thanks.
So Charlie, is the idea we're doing more tests and so the turnaround times haven't improved in the last month or two?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think, and it's not just us, again, you know, with so much being done by these large national labs, it's national testing rates. And, you know, when things, when there are these, even the state public health lab does really well and for weeks has been, you know, averaging two- and three-day turnarounds. But then when something happens, like Umatilla or Mount Hira or Lincoln County, and they get a surge, that can affect even their capability, although they've been performing really admirably through this.
Okay. You were talking about contact tracing, and I noticed last week, I think, on the chart, we were at 17% and the goal is 70 or 80%. Do you have any notion? I connect that with the mask and the resistance that was there that seems to be fading somewhat. Is there any kind of campaign that is going or should be going to get the word out how important it is to cooperate with contact tracing?
Well, and that's not really a function of contact tracing. That is not the percentage of cases that are linked to a known prior case. And so when we get those kind of numbers, it means that there is spread in the community away from known points of previous cases or outbreaks. And that's the real problem there. That's sort of these sparks flying and landing various places around the community. What that indicates is, you know, a real potential for one of these super-spreader events, increased potential for a super-spreader event if people are gathering, you know, outside of their little bubble of just a few people. And so that's where I think the information going out, just continuing to tell people, you know, folks are getting sick. What we're trying to do is prevent wider spread. It's not located in a particular location. We just keep seeing an increased number that are what we call sustained community spread.
Okay. Thank you. Earlier, you talked about contact with the schools, including OSU. We get a fair amount of questions, as I'm sure you do, of, well, what's the plan? Do you have a sense when the timetable and details for schools opening, including OSU, might be firmed up?
Yeah, their, OSU's entire resumption plan is posted on their website. It's very detailed. It's a long one. It's about 50 pages long, but about over, almost 15 pages of that is their communicable disease plan, which they have built in really close collaboration with us. And actually, they are developing internal investigation and contact tracing capability to assist us with the cases that are identified within their own clinic, which is really great news. You know, they started some increased activities on July 15th. So, you know, they've got some very modified increased activities going on, including some day science and computer, you know, they commonly call those camps. They're small groups. They're doing, they're cohorting people very closely. They are adhering to the state 10-person gathering guidance. They are indeed still looking at a highly modified fall schedule with on-campus residents. They've got mandatory masking in place everywhere on campus, have had that well before the governor's mandate. They are putting in a lot of new materials on campus to protect both lecturers and students. Completely modified their housing and dining plans. They have, they've identified resources for isolation and quarantine of students. But I think it really is going to be, I know it is, an ongoing process as they watch this epidemiology, as they talk to us from day to day and week to week. epidemiology, as they talk to us from day to day and week to week. And so, you know, at this point, given local and state epidemiology, they are still planning for modified on-campus study in the, starting in September. But that is subject to rapid change.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for our EOC folks?
I have one. Charlie, can we have a copy of that OSU plan?
Yes, I will send you a link.
That'd be great.
It is posted on their website and I will send you all a link to it right away.
Thank you.
Commissioner Malone, before Charlie and Danielle drop off, and I don't know if Brian is still there, I'd like to put something out on the table for the board's input that I think it's valuable to have Charlie and Danielle here for.
Okay.
So when you're ready to go to that, let me know.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So Commissioners, as you're aware, we did receive our metrics last Thursday. Those metrics that the state is tracking, we are tracking. We're certainly not favorable regarding Benton County. And I think now we are at least not in compliance with three or four of those six or seven matrix, or metrics. I don't have them here in front of me. But as I looked at those last week, I grew concerned based on some of the statistics that you've spoken about this morning. Number one, we've seen a 29% increase in cases. Keep in mind, this data is from about two weeks ago, it appears. But we are seeing a definite increase in cases in Benton County, and that report identifies 29%. In addition, Charlie touched on this earlier, the metric, another metric is 83% of the cases that we did contact tracing on weren't able to be traceable back to a known source. And so for me, that's very concerning. And as Charlie indicated, it really shows that the virus is circulating within Benton County. The reason that I share that background with you is I started yesterday generating conversation amongst staff about whether or not Benton County should be taking a step back relative to what we're doing within our county facilities. As you're aware, we reopened our facilities the end of May. We've been open now for a month and a half, and we've gradually and incrementally continued to expand the number of employees that are occupying our buildings. And now, based on the metrics that I'm seeing, I'm wondering if we shouldn't be contracting back to just having skeleton staffing in our facilities. Right now, I can't tell you exactly how many employees we have on any given day within our facilities. We do have a report that's generated. It's not 100% accurate because it relies on employees entering their contact tracing information in terms of what buildings they've been at. But I would say that between customers and employees, we probably have between 150 and 200 customers and employees that are frequenting our facilities on any given day. So with that in mind, it's concerning to me regarding most recent statistics, and I'm beginning to wonder and question as to whether or not we should constrain our operations, continue to keep our facilities open, but really constrain our operations again and just have skeleton staffing as opposed to kind of where we're at now. So I wanted to put that out there for your input. I do plan on talking to the executive committee tomorrow, as well as getting feedback from the department directors. But I wanted to put this out there and give you the opportunity to provide me feedback while Charlie and Danielle were present as well.
Joe, I had kind of that same thought in terms of, you know, wanting to be on top of this and making sure that whatever steps we take to come back, that they, that it's measurable and that it's consistent rather than this kind of wave that we're going through. So I appreciate the comments.
And I don't want to be alarmed just by that set of statistics. We'll be seeing more on this Thursday. But I do think it's something we should be considering. And Commissioner Rosero, it looks like she has a comment.
I have a question for Charlie. I think that one of the things that I've been struggling with is the fact that we continue to have this low positivity rate. 2% is pretty darn good. I know that 5% is a real tipping point. But we have all of these positive diagnoses with an unknown transmission source. So that's what I'm toggling between. You know, if we had all of that unknown transmission and a much higher positivity rate, I would be even more concerned. But the fact that our lab tests are lagging so much adds a whole other layer of confounding uncertainty. So those are the three things that I would be watching in terms of trying to decide whether to ratchet back. And I really would love to hear from Charlie as to how he and others are thinking about the interaction of those factors.
Thank you, Commissioner. You definitely get the epidemiology gold star of the day. That is what we are watching, what we're concerned about. One of the factors that I expressed to Joe yesterday is that this kind of spread, this kind of community transmission, has an inertia of its own. There are trends there that cannot be turned on a dime. And I think that it would behoove county administration, I think it would behoove the commissioners to sort of think about this in those terms, that even when we look at places like Florida, Texas, and Arizona, were they to stomp on the brakes today and do a complete lockdown, it is very like, almost certain that they would continue to have increasing cases for four to six weeks more, just because the transmission is out there, the people who have pre-symptomatic or asymptomatic infections now may get, or a portion of them will get sick and a portion of those will get critically ill in weeks. And so I think, to me, it makes it worth, you know, from a public health point of view, to think about this in terms of prevention. And do we look at stepping back county services and exposure of our staff and the public and even our county bays? Do we do that sort of after the horse has left the barn? Do we leave that barn door open and wait until we're up over that 5% positivity rate or have a really large focal outbreak? Or do we try to take some proactive action, learn from the mistakes and the experiences of others and be a bit more proactive? I understand, you know, this is your decision, it's way beyond mine because there are so many other economic and social factors involved. But, you know, I keep reflecting back to when we entered Phase Two early in June and everybody was watching 14-day timeline and saying, okay, by mid-June, if nothing bad has happened, then we're sort of in the clear. And those of us in epidemiology were saying, no, you know, because of the exponential growth of this, it will be mid-July before we know the effects of what happened in early June going into Phase Two. And we're certainly seeing that now. And that's the effect of that inertia that we're talking about. These things take time and have trends of their own.
Charlie, last week's numbers were up quite a bit. Do you have a sense if that was kind of a one-off or are we into a trend?
I believe we're in a trend. And I believe, you know, within Oregon, Benton County is sort of where Oregon is nationally. We have not, we're not in the position of some of these states that have had massive problems, and Benton County isn't in the position of some of our sister counties who've had massive problems. But I think the trend is in that direction.
Thank you.
Commissioners, this is Brian Lee. Can I also chime in on one little nugget on to what Charlie was saying too? I know Joe talked about county facilities, which is definitely one we might want to pare back on. But one thing I just want to highlight is, you know, if we as a county go back into Phase One and scale back, one thing we might have to consider is the enforceability of our scale back. And if the health department or the enforcement body is ready to actually close businesses and do things like that, if we go that route, outside of what the governor does. In addition, of course, our closures won't extend into the city. So we definitely need to get corollaries behind to do that. And that might be a hard sell on businesses to go back, even just to Phase One, not even full shutdown, but just Phase One, as well as the other cities. So it would be weird too because we also have North Alk who may be affected by it, but they tell us there's no way that they're going to participate in any of that, even if we close it. So there's other political ramifications there, and I'm guessing that the governor is going to close down and enroll everyone back into Phase One here within the next two weeks, just because our trends are all up around the state. So that's just kind of my take on it. And enforceability, I think, of doing those closures is going to be a concern. And if we, you know, we had loosely talked about down-staffing the JIC, and I think that if we do do anything outside of what the governor said, we'll have to up-staff. So something to think about.
What I got from your proposal, Joe, or your question, was just talking about Benton County facilities.
That's correct.
And, yeah, I think anything wider would, at least ideally, come from the governor's level and then we could follow along. But we do have control over what happens in our buildings. Do you have a proposal, what that would look like?
Actually, at this point, I do not. I was just wanting to begin that conversation. What's really important for me is the report that comes out on Thursday relative to the weekly metrics. I plan on getting feedback from department directors tomorrow and during our update meeting that we have. And then I also will look at those statistics on Thursday and then consult with Danielle and Charlie. And then at that point, I'll be, I think I'll be in a better position to recommend whether or not we scale back in terms of our county facility operations or leave them as-is. It's always been our intent to incrementally increase and slowly increase repopulating our buildings, and we have done that. We have given a lot of leeway to the department directors to manage the teleworking that occurs, which helps us balance how many people are in our facilities. So I think we've gone about it in the right way. However, acknowledging that I think expanding and contracting is going to be a way of life for us, at least over the foreseeable future, as we ride the waves, if you will, of the metrics. So I am not hesitant to scale back if that's what we need to do. My biggest fear really is having an outbreak within a county facility. And now that we are seeing the virus circulate more so in Benton County, I think it increases the chances of an employee either contracting coronavirus or transmitting it through the workplace, what have you. So I am concerned. I do think the metrics we need to stay on top of, and this needs to be on the forefront of our mind, not on the back of our mind.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you raising the question. Sounds like we can continue this discussion next Tuesday when we have another week's worth of data and also time to figure out what scaling back actually means in our operation.
And if there's something more urgent that comes out of the metrics on Thursday, I'll be communicating with each one of you individually and not waiting for our meeting next Tuesday. But we'll watch the metrics closely on Thursday. And the input from the department heads for me is also valuable and important, and I'll be able to receive that tomorrow.
Okay. Does that clarify your concerns, Brian, that we're just talking about county facilities?
Yeah, absolutely. Joe had mentioned this earlier. I just wanted to chime in on the county side versus the overall community side. But, yeah, makes sense.
Well, and I appreciate you maybe giving us a heads up on what the governor might do, that it's, we may have some changes in the closed-down direction in the next several weeks. So that's good to have that on our radar. So thank you. Anything else on this?
Commissioner?
Charlie?
Yeah, can I make just one comment? And it is, you know, I totally agree with Joe, you know, watching our local operations, trying to minimize risk within our own system is our responsibility. And I think that keeping an eye on that very closely is a great idea regarding regional and statewide, you know, just, you know, a little, an observation attached to Brian's comments, you know, local rollbacks or curbs, given the mobility of our workforce and our population, you know, local changes may have pretty minimal impact as opposed to regional or statewide changes. But I also just want to put on the table that both with building the watch list, imposing the outdoor, the mask mandate, including the outdoor mask mandate, and the reduction in gathering size, Governor has indicated, at least to my co-group, that statewide input and support for those kind of moves is very important to her and is a critical piece. And so, you know, if there is concern about the direction of these trends and of the effect regionally, locally, of doing any, you know, any statewide freeze or changes in mandate or even potential rollback, expressing that, that kind of concern, at least, if not support, to the governor's office may be something to consider as well because I know that her office has been taking those local voices very seriously in making these decisions.
I appreciate that point, Charlie. It's a kind of a fine balance between leading and having enough people following you and or waiting too long. And so we have contact with the governor's office on a regular basis, and I appreciate that heads up. I think the general public thinks we're on the track to keep opening. And so this is, I think, is, would be new news to a lot of folks. So we need to work on that and we'll do what we can in Benton County to make sure we're on track. But I really appreciate your input on this. It's, I'm sure I got this from you, but when people ask me how we're doing, I say, well, the trends aren't very good and these are the good times. This is, we have good weather, we can be outside, easy to have small gatherings with distance and warm weather and... distance and warm weather, and then the weather changes in the fall and school reopening, so we really do need to get our house in order now to have any, much of a chance of having schools physically, at least partially, open in the fall. So appreciate the input. Any other? Annabelle?
Well, just along those lines, I was thinking of the schools myself, and it might not be a bad idea. Charlie, I'm sure, Charlie and Danielle, you, I'm probably sure you're in constant contact with them, but I would really like for us to have a conversation with some, maybe remotely, obviously, with some of those superintendents. And so we are pretty much knowledgeable about what their planning is, which goes, leads back to your concerns too, Joe, because it's not only Benton County as a community, it's including the schools as a community, it's including the people at large as a community. So we've all got to be talking about this sensibly.
Anything else? Well, I think, like I said earlier, we will definitely have this topic on our agenda next Tuesday, and hopefully you're wrong, Charlie, and the numbers get better, so. But it's important to be realistic in what the odds, what the odds really are, so really appreciate all your efforts, keeping us informed.
Commissioner Malone, we do have George Looney that is up next for our financial report, and also reminding the board that we're about 15 minutes behind schedule.
Okay. All right. George Looney, can you give us a brief financial update for the last week?
Absolutely, and the good news is I will be very brief. So we are reviewing the expenses for the week ending July 10th, which was a week that was all virtual, was a virtual EOC, so our expenses really were personnel. Outside of personnel, the other expenses, we had one invoice for a videographer, and the city of Corvallis had some outside EOC expenses that were COVID-related as well, about $15,000. So those are really the full expenses for the week of the 10th of July. We still continue to struggle with getting, reporting in for 214s. I'm sure that most people think I have changed my middle name to 214 because that's all I ever talk about anymore, but we still are struggling. And one of the other things that has changed, and if you look from report to report, the week prior to the 10th, we had a payroll from the county, which had an adjustment of about $38,000. Those are trueing up what our estimates were based off of the 214s that were submitted and then what actual payroll was. So that's kind of gives you an idea of the difference from one paid period to the next. We should be seeing a true-up for the city as well fairly soon. So that's really the significant things that are going on with the finances. It was a very quiet week for the week of the 10th. This next report, I expect to be very similar because, again, it was a virtual EOC. So that's really it.
Okay. Any questions for George? Okay. Well, thanks for the report and appreciate your efforts, and hopefully we can get the word around that, even though you're not physically present at the EOC, that the 214s are just as important as ever.
Absolutely. Yep, and we'll keep, I'll keep hammering on them every briefing they hear about them.
That's what it takes. It's kind of like advertising and repetition is why you see their ads so many times. Zan?
Yeah, I do have a question with respect to CARES Act dollars, and clearly we have an opportunity to request reimbursement through December 31st, and decisions to make about how we want to use those dollars in support of public health and economic vitality. So I know that Joe sent us some materials about that and about some of the ways that the city is approaching those decisions. We also have a report from Chris Cuaca from BCF about how we have sent those dollars to support nonprofits. So I was wondering when we were going to have that discussion, or whether it would be today or whether we're deferring until next week.
Commissioners, that discussion is not occurring today with Chris Cuaca. As an update, that is occurring, the larger coronavirus relief. Mary Ottley and I are meeting with our executive committee tomorrow morning to review and develop ideas for the board's consideration. So it depends on how our meeting goes tomorrow with the executive committee. We'll also be reaching out to department heads as well, but I would anticipate the earliest we would be having that conversation would be next Tuesday. It could be the following Tuesday, so it depends on what kind of progress we make over the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, George.
You're welcome. I'll talk to you next week.
It's a deal. Moving on, 5.2, update on donation to the Benton County Foundation. We have Mary Ottley and Chris Cuaca.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I'm really just here to say, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and he's going to tell you what, where our funding went with from the foundation. So, Chris, your turn.
Well, great, Mary. Thank you, and thank you, Commissioners, for having us with you today. Knowing that we are short on time, I'll give you a brief overview, and yesterday around lunchtime, we set a full report for you to review, and of course, anytime you have questions, you can send me an email or we can ask questions today. So in the very high level where your funds went, a couple of key points for you to consider. The $100,000 you provided to the Benton Community Foundation went to 22 projects at 17 nonprofits that were located in Elsie, Wodgett, Corvallis, Monroe, Palomar, and Southern. So the funds that you provided to us were spread throughout the county, and about 36% of the funds that you provided to us, and the threshold you gave was 30%, about 36% of the funds you provided us were specifically focused on communities throughout Benton County or outside of Corvallis. And another 20% of funds, for a total of a little bit over 50% of funds, went to support, not just those rural communities, but also we are asked to support undocumented immigrants and communities of color with funding. So we were able to surpass the threshold you asked us to meet. And these funds, again, were based on three things. We provided grants to organizations based on their projected impact, the urgency of the requests, and the vital need described to us by those nonprofits requesting support. Now, kind of giving an overview, since March, we've received in total nearly a million dollars in nonprofits' support requests, and we were able to fund about $309,000 of those supports. So for every dollar we had to spend, there was about $3 in requests given to the foundation. This is typical of what the foundation sees through our regular community grant process that we do every year. However, of course, this million-dollar request number doesn't represent all nonprofits throughout Benton County. It was primarily those nonprofits we have relationships with and that we've worked with EOC to reach out to. Couple other points that I wanted to make before we got into some of the details or any questions you might have, is that we've really seen, from a nonprofit standpoint, a real breakdown of the social safety net. I'm sure you're seeing this on this end, but a local childcare provider shared with me that since the beginning of the pandemic, our county has lost three of four childcare slots. So if we consider how families go back to work or how our communities send children back to school, and especially for those working families or two-parent households that are working, we have to consider that 75% of the slots that we previously had children going to childcare in are no longer here. And the cost of two of those slots in Corvallis before this pandemic was equal to the cost of sending an adult child to the WU for a year. So that's just one of the areas that we know we're going to see changes in how our community is able to work through the pandemic as it continues to grow. The other thing to consider is that initially, we said that we thought this would change nonprofits' future aspirations for how they do their business, maybe for up to two years, and we revised that for more of a three- to five-year outset. So the effect of this pandemic in the short term is that we expect funding and how nonprofits work in our community to really change for the foreseeable future, similar to that where a large natural disaster may have happened in our area. It's not good news. I will say the good news is that we were very responsive to nonprofits, and we feel very good about the work that we were able to accomplish with your support, and we're very thankful for you in joining this effort, and we expect to do another round of funding this fall, which families have already started donating to. So there's a, there will be more work in the future, and I think with the work we've done with the nonprofits at this time, it's been a success. So with that, I'll leave it to any questions.
Well, you mentioned the three- to five-year timetable, and I think the state legislature economic revenue forecasts are in a similar timetable, that this, this is going to be with us for a while. And I think early on, there was a lot of hopeful timelines that this was going to be a blip and we'll get through it, and it'll be over by April or May or June or July or August, and the trend is, if you were on the call when the EOC folks were reporting, we're in it. This is, this is a marathon, and we have to take care of our staff to be able to support a marathon effort, and so that, that fits right in. I guess my other comment was, really appreciate your expertise, and I think Benton County giving some funding to you folks, you're the experts and have the relationships and be able to set priorities that in Benton County, we would have a hard time doing that. It would be more of a piecemeal effort, so really appreciate that you're, you were in place and, not that we're ever ready for something like this, but you folks were as well-prepared as any, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments for Chris?
I also wanted to extend my thanks to the Benton Community Foundation on this topic, and look forward to continued reports from BCF about what you are perceiving as the top community needs, and if we choose to participate in the second round in the fall, to be able to have a discussion about whether or not we want to target our contributions even more or whether we want to leave it breaking in a similar way in order to address the most important needs in the community.
So that's a great comment, Commissioner, and thank you for your thanks, but also, you know, one of the things we saw laid there that surely you're seeing at the county level is not just the social service net that's really been challenged, but also those families from, that are experiencing poverty, people experiencing homelessness, disenfranchised communities, and of course, the larger extent that this affected, people from communities of color. And so those are areas that we certainly have our eye on improving our outreach to and our work with over the summer months, and we look forward to extending more support to those communities in the fall in a way that helps them in a way they see the most help needed. It was great to work with you to give funds to Capo Latinos Unidos through this process, and we were able to raise funds in a way so that we not just funded individuals and bill pay through organizations like We Care, Capo Latinos Unidos, and Dad Northwest, but we're also able to fund nonprofits who are providing basic services like food, hygiene supplies, shelter. And so because we're able to work together, we're able to stretch those dollars throughout the county, and we're very happy with the results. It's hard to say happy or success at a time like this, but our partners have shared with us their appreciation of work.
Well, Chris, I'm glad you mentioned childcare. That's an issue that comes up in almost every conversation with, trying to solve our problems, and, because I think childcare was an issue before this hit, and it's just, there's some talk at the national level to put this as a priority, and I think we ought to all try to do what we can to make sure that actually happens, that our, between our schools not open last spring and probably half-open, at best half-open, starting in the fall, it's just a gaping hole in, like you called it, our social safety net, and we, I think that's one that really should be emphasized, so thanks for letting us know what our situation is in Benton County. So anything else for Chris? Keep up the good work, and we'll continue this conversation.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Next up, update, 5.3, update and approval of the 2019 Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program, otherwise known as AWPP. Jennifer Ward and Lori Starah.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
You ready for me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So you probably recall that in June of 2019, the Budget Committee approved $45,000 to fund the Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program, the AWPP, as Commissioner Blount said, which began as a pilot program last biennium. And so in November of last year, the board received a report from staff on the status of the program up until that time. So the Commissioners were briefed on who applied for AWPP grants in 2019, the process for awarding those grants, and then the results of that awards process. At that time, you were also given a preview of what lie ahead for the program, including farm visits to the 2019 grant recipients, an operational lending toolbox of non-lethal deterrents, and the upcoming opportunities for education and outreach. So now that the AWPP is settling into an annual cycle, staff will be producing an annual report that summarizes not just the activities associated with the program, but also presents data collected from the grant recipients that will then help us monitor the effectiveness of various non-lethal deterrents as well as the program itself. So the, the report that you've had the opportunity to review summarizes the educational outreach activities that were conducted in 2019, but it also provides data from the 2018 projects through year two of implementation. The report also then addresses the awarding of the 2019 grants, and since you have the entirety of the report in front of you, and in the interest of time, I'll just mention some highlights going through. So as far as educational and outreach activities that took place in 2019, program information was distributed via website, press release, and social media postings. The lending toolbox was established to give county residents the opportunity to try The lending toolbox was established to give county residents the opportunity to try non-lethal deterrents devices and materials before having to purchase them for themselves. The A W P P program contributed $3,000 towards the installation of a Beaver Pond Leveler at Denawi Creek. This device was installed as a demonstration project and also to help reduce flooding of 53rd Street near the Willamette Pacific Railroad over, yes, overpass, I always want to say underpass. If you look in your reports, you'll see a lovely picture of Parks Director Lori Starha and volunteer Randy Camilio. They hosted an informational table at the O S U Small Farms Conference. The program also sponsored Rancher Louise Liebenberg, who spoke about her experiences using guard dogs on her ranch. And then I'll just add here that in this year, Lori and I hosted a table at that same conference in February, and also hosted a table at the Corvallis Eco Film Festival. As far as data from the 2018 projects, so in 2018, the A W P P awarded $35,363 in grants to eight Benton County farms, and six of those projects were actually completed. And those applicants were required to keep project records, report any conflicts that they might have with wildlife, evaluate their project, and abide by program requirements for at least for three years following the completion of their project. So the, the report that you have summarizes the second year of the post-project evaluations for the 2018 projects. And here are some highlights from that second year of implementation. So four of the six farms experienced some crop or livestock losses, although circumstances and predators varied. And I'm just going to share some examples because I think it's interesting, what they encountered is not necessarily what we would have expected. So for example, Farm One installed electro net fencing to protect its livestock from predators, and a deer fence to protect crops from deer. And both of the fencing methods were effective for the purposes for which they were installed. However, neither could have prevented the loss of 15 cucumber seedlings to moles. Farm Two purchased and trained a guardian dog and installed electric fencing and a fox light to protect their livestock and poultry. While these methods in combination have completely excluded mammalian predators, they have not deterred the great horned owl that lives on the property. So encouragingly, the same farm was awarded a 2019 A W P P grant to purchase two additional fox lights. I'm interested to hear about if that's had an impact on, on the impacts of the owl. Farm Three installed fencing to protect goats, chickens, and beehives, and to secure a night barn for their goats. In April, before the fence was installed, beehives were lost to a bear. This bear was sighted again in November, but by that time, the fence had been erected, and the beehives were secured inside. So it's just interesting to see how these projects play out. All of the farms reported, reported the same or fewer number of wildlife conflicts since implementing their non-lethal deterrents projects. Most participant, most grant participants reported being highly satisfied or satisfied with the non-lethal methods and tools that they selected, and overall program participants were highly satisfied or satisfied with the individual A W P P elements they made use of and with the A W P P itself. All participants said they would apply again for a wildlife deterrents grant and would recommend the grant program to other farmers. So these evaluations have provided to us as staff positive and helpful feedback regarding the efficacy of the A W P P. I'm very encouraged to read quotes like, "We have had no livestock loss using our electric netting system." "We also realized that crop loss related to deer grazing would be so much greater without the fence in place," end quote. Or, "Dogs and electric fencing combined to make excellent protection," unquote. Additionally, we've gotten really constructive feedback on the user-friendliness of program forms, and suggestions on additional information that we could provide to farmers that would be valuable to them. I'll just add that I think the process of evaluating the projects gives farmers the opportunity to reflect on their own decisions and operations. I like the quote from the farmer who said, "Turns out I greatly underestimated the amount of time and labor that went into the projects that I proposed." So the final part of this report covers last year's A W P P grant awards. You were briefed on that in November, so I'm not going to go into it here. However, Lori and I are both available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Jennifer?
No questions. I'm really glad that this program is going well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Zan?
I know that we have asked each time you and Lori presented whether or not you've had any collaboration from the Fish and Wildlife Service, Animal Plant Health Inspection Service, have you? Is there any more interaction with the Trapper at all in terms of sharing message and education to small and large farmers?
And I might, I might let Lori chime in on that. We had, we do have ongoing discussion with him, contact with him on an annual basis. I don't think that has happened recently just due to COVID, but I'll let Lori correct me.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Commissioners. After the meeting with Commissioners back in November, we did have a meeting with the local supervisor. They, Brian came out to our side. He also had an opportunity to connect with the new Public Works Road Manager. That program and funding actually is underneath Public Works for a portion of their funding. So Jennifer and I also met with Brian to talk about the A W P program, and that's, you know, the possibility of coordination. There seemed to be an interest at that time. We have not reconvened with Brian primarily due to COVID and a lot of work Jennifer's been doing on the program itself and supporting the grantees. That is something that we do need to circle back with them and find out because looking to the future, we need to determine how he's going to move forward once we get into the next budget cycle.
Thank you. That's part of what I was wondering, what, you know, what we're thinking in future. And it's a, I think it's a useful program. It's very educational. I don't know about the scale of impact, and I think I would love to see it be able to scale up. I'm not sure if it's possible, so I'd love to hear more.
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted on that progress.
Okay. I was curious, something like the O S U Small Farm Conference, what kind of response, what kind of interest that you've gotten at an event like that?
We get a lot of interest at our, at our table. We just have some really great discussions with people coming by. One of the things that, oh, I've changed this for the application for, for this round, for the 2020 awards, is, and as part of their application, they need to indicate how they heard about the program, and I hope that will help us to better track how much of our, we're doing the education and the outreach activities, and how are they finding out about that? So, and, yes. So I'm sorry. So in summary, I would say that we get great response at the, at the Farms Conference. I don't know of a tight hold on how many of those connections at the conference are then turning into grant applications.
Well, even if they, they don't apply, at least they know the program exists, and it gives them food to thought, food for thought. And so I think it's a very worthwhile program. Any other questions or comments? I will, would entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Okay.
I think Zan's hand was up before.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the Small Farms Conference is attended by people not just from Benton County, but all over the country and even from overseas. So I think that part of the effect is not local, because I think that you may, we may have spurred the development of similar programs elsewhere. And I don't know whether you've been tracking any of that, or if there's a way to do so, but that would be another interesting thing to know. But I do second that motion.
And Commissioner O'Shea, I would also say that it is a tremendous opportunity to just talk about non-lethal deterrents, that we do a lot of educating about just what the options are, and, you know, turning people to resources who want to, who just want to learn more. So I think it's an educational arm. It's very effective.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to accept the annual report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Next up is item number six, our consent calendar. And like I mentioned at the beginning, I'd like a little more discussion on item 6.2, so I want to remove that. But I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. Item number seven, proclamation proclaiming July 26, 2020 as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. I've got listed Tom Gillies and Cody Gottschall.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you. Hope you can hear me.
You're fine, Tom.
All right, thank you. Cody Gottschall and myself are here representing the mental health, Your Mental Health Addictions and Developmental Disability Advisory Committee, reading a proclamation celebrating the 30th anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act. Should I continue?
Yes, please.
Before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter pertaining July 26, 2020, as the American with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in celebration of the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and reaffirming Benton County's commitment to ADA goals. Proclamation. Whereas 30 years ago on July 26, 1990, President George H. W. Bush signed into law the American with Disabilities Act, affirming our nation's commitment to eliminating discrimination against people with disabilities, and stating that the shameful walls of exclusion finally come tumbling down. And...
Whereas the A D A was world's first comprehensive declaration of equality for persons with disabilities, and covers approximately one in five Americans, most people will experience disability at some point in their lives, and...
Whereas persons with disabilities and the families and loved ones that have been their champions for equality have contributed significantly to our nation's advancement and protection. From President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, Claudia Gordon, Helen Keller, Stephen Hawking, and Temple Grandin, to our more than 2.9 billion wounded and disabled American veterans, and every person who has cared about someone that is differently-abled. And...
Whereas among any other organizations in Benton County, the Benton County Special Transportation Pro, through its contractor Dial-a-Buzz Incorporated, and the Benton County Developmental Diversity Program, along with their advisory committees, together serve well over 8,000 Benton County residents with visual, auditory, physical, mental, emotional, cognitive, and developmental disabilities by assisting them with veterans' work, school, medical treatment, therapy, shopping, and social activities, and...
Whereas while we celebrate the 30th anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act and the achievements which have been accomplished, we also recognize that the full promise of the American with Disabilities Act can only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to achieve full implementation of the goals of the American Disabilities Act. And...
Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims July 26, 2020 as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Benton County, celebrating the 30th anniversary of the ADA and reaffirming Benton County's commitment to continue to work to bring forth promise of equity embedded by the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Very timely. Any comments before having a motion?
Not for me.
Thank you. I would move to proclaim July 26, 2020 as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Benton County, and in doing so, to reaffirm Benton County's commitment to continue to work towards full implementation of Americans with Disabilities Act goals. Really appreciate your participation in helping us stay with this proclamation.
Second. You're welcome.
It's been moved and seconded to proclaim July 26, 2020 as ADA Awareness Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for your efforts and your participation this morning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great day.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us.
All right. See, next up is the public hearing. So do I close? Just open, okay? I'm opening the public hearing in the matter amending the 2019, 2021 biennial budget, supplemental budget number 21011. Jennifer, there she is.
I'm here. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As we had discussed previously at the work session, we are coming before you to request supplemental budget 21011. And within this supplemental budget, we are asking to make a change to the tax title and land fund. While there is a net appropriation increase of zero, we are actually coming to you and asking to reclassify the appropriation authority and to transfer from contingency $50,000 to trust operations to offset the cost of the, unanticipated cost of the fuel tank removal on the property. And that is the very small supplemental budget this time.
All right. Any, so since this is a public hearing, any members of the public wish to weigh in on this, on the supplemental budget? Hearing none? If there's no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the supplemental budget number 21011.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I could not hear, I couldn't hear you clearly at all.
I'm sorry. My motion was just to approve the supplemental budget 21011. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you very much.
I'll stop mumbling.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I close the public hearing. We are on new business 8.1, C I P budget cost-saving recommendations. And you're up again, Jennifer, or... And you're up again, Jennifer, or Mary, whoever wants to weigh in on this one.
I'll start with the details and documentation, and Mary, of course, can interject at any time. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee met recently to identify potential cost savings for the remainder of the 1921 biennium, being cognizant of potential COVID impacts to the county's budget for the remainder of the biennium. We are bringing to the VOC a plan that includes possible cost savings from a couple different areas. One would be the CI pool, CIP pool allocation. There is a potential savings of approximately $1.2 million. That consists of, there are some projects that we are proposing be delayed, or there are some that are no longer necessary, and that equates to $1.1 million. There is also some additional savings on projects that have been completed and were under what was anticipated in terms of expenditure, and that's about $21,000. And then in that, also, the last piece of that would be, there is a balance of unallocated funds in the pool funding of approximately $114,000. That could be cost savings as well. The, there is another piece to potential general fund cost savings that's not directly part of the CIP pool allocation, but the law enforcement program does make transfers from the general fund into their vehicle and technology replacement funds. And they did provide a proposal that eliminates $43,422 of that transfer. Additionally, there are some savings in non-general fund projects, $121,000 in some facilities projects that aren't needed. Finance, we placed a hold on, Mary, what was that project? I'm drawing a blank. It's Timekeeper? Something like that. So that's $64,000. And then Parks, one of the proposals was to push off work done for the Dare Master Plan. And so there is a contribution from Fund 520 in the amount of $10,000 that would no longer be needed in that case. Mary, you're not muted anymore.
Sorry, it's only executive time. It was executive.
Executive time. Thank you. Quickly to go into the details in your packet, the first two pages of tables are the projects that are general fund-supported projects. This would kind of give you the breakdown of what the CIP committee is proposing be delayed or is canceled because no longer, it's no longer necessary. The first item on the list would be the $100,000 set aside for solar panels that can be pushed off until the next biennium. There is a due date, however, of spending those funds by 12/16/2021. And there was also set aside $100,000 for space planning, and that was primarily for the Sunset Building prior to the purchase of the Fiserv Building. Now that we no longer need to do some adjustments to the layout in Sunset at this point, that could be freed up as well. The CIP committee requested that we perhaps push off or delay $200,000 of the Fairgrounds Capital Projects placeholder and hold that back. As I did discuss previously, the law enforcement were reducing their transfers from the general fund into their equipment replacements. In Parks, the Dare Master Plan, Lori was okay with pushing that out for another biennium, so that would save $40,000 in general fund contribution. The Roads Department, Gary had mentioned that they could get away with using only $140,000 of the $300,000 initial contribution, freeing up then $160,000 to go back into the general fund. And then there was the possibility of also delaying the project on the Hubbard Bridge, which would be a $500,000 contribution from the general fund. All of that totaling $1.143,422 million. Comments, Gary, Mary?
Zan?
I have a couple of questions, particularly with respect to roads for Gary. The, obviously, the big ticket item is Hubbard Bridge, and I don't recall, this is a match pledge? And what's the main source of funding for the bridge? Are we in jeopardy of losing funding if we, for the whole project, if we defer?
No, it is a matter of when the money comes in, and so we're moving ahead. But we've already expended some funds on the project, so in theory, we've kind of started working on our match or trying to meet the bidding timeframe for next year to make sure that we get the in-water period next year because the rest will be done. So we're still moving ahead. The funding there, if we're not in jeopardy of losing it, we're just kind of rearranging how the funding and when it comes in.
Got it. Okay. And then also, in your department, with respect to the multi-use path maintenance dollars, did we extend enough of those funds in order to transfer the path to the city of Corvallis?
No. The funds that were used were to help fill the gap on the Hubbard Bridge, the one that's being redone on that path, Campus Wake Path, I think is what it's called. When we approached Corvallis to do this work and then take over the path, they did not want to go that route. So at that point, we figured it was time to step back, maybe have some further discussions with them on that path, and not spend any monies until we figure that out.
And that path is the one that's up past NLK Park and going up into the new development?
Correct. Correct.
Well, I hope we can still get to agreement with the city on that one. It doesn't make sense for us to be the owners and responsible for the maintenance.
Commissioners, I would also, just one thing that Jen mentioned, the $100,000 for the space planning. I believe that we wanted to reserve a little bit of that, or it was intended that a little bit of that would be to help also do some space planning for the DA in the area that's now occupied by the county clerk. I don't know how much that would be. I can't imagine. The funds that should be used for those planning services down there.
Okay. Any other questions for Jen or Mary? I guess I have a question on the space planning. Do we have to adjust the, taking the $100,000, how to meet what Gary's plan?
I would say if you're going to make a change to the recommendations, it would be nice to have a number so we could reflect that, because I'd like to update the plan in its entirety, the entire document.
Okay. It would be nice to have a number, Gary.
Let's just, let's say $15,000.
Okay. And so the amount in the right-hand column would then be $85,000?
Correct.
And saying to your question on the Hubbard Bridge, I think it's 90% from ODOT and 500,000 from Benton County, so it's a five-and-a-half-million-dollar project. And Gary, you said there was no problem delaying that a year with the ODOT funding?
Yeah, the funding's not an issue, right? We'll be okay.
Great. All right. Any other questions on the CIP budget? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I would move to approve the proposed cost-saving changes to the 1921 Capital Improvement Plan with the adding back of the $15,000 for space planning.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts, and it was, I'm on the CIP committee, and it was nice to do some homework there and postpone projects and cancel a few to kind of unknown times in our budget process. And nice to be able to put a million dollars back, so thank you for your efforts on that. Next up, 8.2, discussion and decision to approve the IGA with the Northwest Oregon Transit Alliance and management plan. So that's, Gary, are you handling that one?
I am, and I think Brad is probably on the phone, so if there's any questions, we can go that route. And I apologize, once we received Commissioner O'Shaughnessy's questions last night, I was a little unsure. And I think we're now, we haven't figured out. So the agreement was one that was an amendment to the alliance back in 2018. Between about that time, the STIF thing ramped up, and we started getting to take care of making our STIF program. And then, of course, Lee retired, and we got into latter part of 2019 before Brad arrived, and we had all the other stuff that we needed to implement. And then COVID hit. This agreement fell through the cracks, so it was never approved originally by the board back in 2018. And with that, of course, is the attached management plan, which is a product of the alliance coming together and using some of the funds that we contribute every year to have that management plan put together. So this is really a very late housekeeping measure to get us up to speed. The way the new agreement is written, that it doesn't have an end date. It just renewed automatically in the agreement. Any entities has the ability to opt out. The critical thing here is us, we are not the state that oversees it, and that is Tullip County. They have a little bit of your staff and are equipped to do that. And our representative is Brad, so in the past, it would have been Lee. This is a, it's a good tie together of the Northwest borough, transit agencies, basically coordinate their services with all of ours. And in theory, at some point in the future, we will be able to have clients that say, listen, Columbia County or St. Helens, if they want to get to Newport to do that, and then over into Albany. So it's a good thing. It's a work in progress. One of the things Commissioner O'Shaughnessy asked about is the progress on the tasks that are listed in Section 5 of the management plan. I think some of them are underway, but what I would propose is, as Lisa Bayalana, she's probably going to some vacation in Greece or whatever, but maybe now it's just Burns. But nothing against Mary and Burns. But anyway, so she's out of the office this week. So when she comes back, we can go to those tasks listed in the management plan and give an update, a written update, and then provide that to, you know, via email in the future. So that's where we're at with this agreement. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. But the hope today is that you would adopt the DA with the attached management plan.
Okay. One comment, the COG is working on kind of a one-stop-shopping web-based ticket sales and schedules, and that's in progress. I'm not, can't remember quite how far along, but that might be a, when that's completed, that might be a model for this group to take up because having different jurisdictions and it's easy, I guess it's hard enough to get people to ride transit. And anything we can do to smooth the process, I think just helps the whole program, so stay tuned.
My understanding was that that was going to occur in that conversation. We were talking about it at the Area Commission on Transportation, that that would be the best approach to do. And I think, I'm assuming that that's still in the conversation. Am I wrong, Gary?
No, it is. Yep. Again, the COVID stuff really is...
I hear you.
Kind of holding pattern in a lot of ways. But right now, of course, these little agencies, including ourselves, we're just trying to keep buses on the road.
Right.
And, of course, opening the coast up too much, you know, or anything like that is something that we don't necessarily want to do. And, but we did, we did open back up our Coast to Valley service. And I think last week, we had about 25 riders. Before, we had about 37. I've not heard this week. So there are stuff, but those, a lot of those are folks coming from, say, Toledo over to Corvallis with doctor's appointments.
Which makes small numbers even more important, that this is a vital service for some people. And for other people, it could be maybe even having fun. But I look forward to being able to make a little progress and get ridership up and getting back to normal. But that may be a while, but I think it's important to at least have a kind of bare-bones system so that we serve the people that really need the service and keep it in place so that when things get back to normal, we can ramp. It's already in place, and we can ramp up service, so. Any other questions or comments for Gary?
Well, no comments, no questions, but comment is making sure that there's information about how to protect oneself when we're on these transit buses.
Yeah, they, Brad and Lee said, and I think it was actually via the OHJ, but they had a certain prescribed message that they have to give out to the transit agencies. And Dial-a-Buzz was sent that, I think probably back in early April or mid-April, I think. Brad can correct me. But they have that, and they're using those standards to, for their drivers and their clients.
Yeah. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm calling in at the phone. Okay. This is Brad. Yeah, just following up. Each of our buses, we've, you know, marked off seats where people can't sit so that, you know, distancing is provided. And then as you enter the bus, we have signage saying, you know, that a mask is required. So, yeah, things like that are in place to hopefully keep people safe.
Thank you. I think that's very important.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the transit agreement.
I would move that we approve the IGA with the Northwest Oregon Transit Alliance and adopt the WADA management plan.
Interesting attitude. I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, thank you, Gary and Brad, and look forward to hearing more about the transit system. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, 8.3, discussion and decision to adopt the resolution designating Benton Corvallis Enterprise Zone with electronic commerce overlay. Easy for me to say. Kate Porsha and Jerry Sorey.
Yes, and you only got me today. Jerry is on vacation this week, taking a much deserved break. I think this will be just real brief for you guys. He did an excellent job on the staff report. We had this item in front of the city council last night. It was approved unanimously. Basically, there's an option to have an electronic commerce, I almost think of it as an overlay on our enterprise zone. In fact, Benton County used to have this overlay and then it went away sometime before my time here with you guys and with the city. There's a finite quantity of these allowed in the state. And this last year, three of them actually expired. And you guys know me, I'm like, hey, let's have all the tools in our toolbox that are available. It's a first-come, first-served basis, which is why we're really grateful and appreciate Teresa's work to kind of fit us in on your busy agenda today. But we think it's a great idea. We see no reason not to do it. We think it could help support the creation of e-commerce businesses. But those also include the businesses that would meet the sustainability goals that both you and the city have in this regard. So, we see it as sort of a straightforward ask, but happy to answer any questions that you guys may have on me.
Do we have any questions for Kate?
We don't have any.
Doesn't look like it. Like you said, it's fairly straightforward. I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I would move to adopt the resolution to designate the Benton County Corvallis Enterprise Zone for Electronic Commerce under ORS 285C.095.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't understand where the state would limit the number of these, but that must touch the history.
It may, and I don't know the history. It used to be a much more robust benefit that included some income tax exemptions, but that was changed back in 2017. So I, I just don't know the background on this one. So, yeah. Anyway, thank you very much, all of you. Appreciate it. Nice to be here.
Thanks, Kate. All right. Next up, 8.4, discussion and decision to approve an order to contract with communities helping addicts navigate change effectively, the Chance organization. Looks like Danielle Brown, and there she is. Take it away, Danielle.
Hi, good morning again, Commissioners. So, as you are aware, during the emergency operation response to COVID, we did a FEMA reimbursement request to assist with placing homeless individuals who are either at risk of exposure to COVID-19 or have symptoms and are waiting test results or are COVID-positive in hotel rooms to help isolate as appropriate for, in an effort to manage the COVID transmission through the homeless community. As we initiated that FEMA reimbursement request, we initially responded, contracted with Chance to do the immediate contract to manage those funds and manage those placements. When we initiated that, we did an informal bid process, as was required, reaching out to both CSC and Corvallis Housing First to explore whether or not they were interested in being the fiduciary agent and the contractor for those services. Both CSC and Corvallis Housing First declined to participate in the bid. They were both very supportive of Chance continuing to provide this programming as CSC had already contacted, contracted with Chance to provide similar support for the homeless individuals in the community. So we did move forward with that contact, contract with Chance. We have continued to request FEMA reimbursement since then, and we're now on the third extension of that FEMA reimbursement. Because we have extended that three times, we are requesting approval to sole source that contract, given that we did the informal bid process and we already have a contract in place. So we're requesting the sole source to avoid doing a full RFP. We've spoken with county council, we've spoken with contracts internally. Because of the limit of the contract and because of the scope of the work, we are confident that Chance is the sole provider of this and the sole support that can provide the contact both at the hotels and the coordination for the homeless individuals. So we're requesting approval for a sole source contract for Chance as we continue to request additional FEMA reimbursement requests through the emergency period for COVID response.
Okay. Any questions for Danielle?
No, seems pretty straightforward to me.
I just want to jump in. One of the things that's critical about this sole source ask is that it could be approved by the board. Hypothetically, departments can do this on their own, but for FEMA reimbursement purposes, Board Commissioners need to approve it. This will get Benton County away from the problem of having to RFP-
Got it.
...for a contract who we know will be given a chance because nobody else will bid. So, it really is expedient and it does line us up for reimbursements. And again, this is the second one you've done in, I think, three weeks. We had one two weeks ago from facilities for the solar panels. So, just know, these are not common. It just so happens that in July, you had to work with them.
Well, I know this is a challenging issue and that we've been discussing for, I think, pretty much the whole duration of the COVID crisis. So, I think this makes sense. If there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move to approve an order to contract with communities helping addicts navigation change effectively.
Okay. And that is order number D 2020 dash 056. All right. A second on that?
Correct.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Danielle.
Any questions?
Okay. Now, I'm adding 8.5, short discussion of the, where did my notes go here? Adding positions at the DA's office. We talked about this last week at the District Attorney's update. I guess, I had a couple comments that this bypassed our normal hiring procedures and I think we need to be really careful with that, that this came straight to the Commissioners and did not use our normal position review. So, just to state my concerns there. And Joe had a question last week about how much staff has been added in the last few years. And I wouldn't mind more detail on that. What I remember from our DA's answer was, well, some of those were grants and, but there wasn't much specificity. And being relatively new to the board, it would help if I had more background in just what's the trend. And adding three positions is a significant increase in one setting. And it, I think it was $350,000 estimate cost for the duration of the current fiscal year, and then we'll continue after that. But just wanted to share my concerns and, Annabelle?
Well, I think we've been having this discussion about this particular request for a long time in terms, and it all came out after the body cam situation with the city of police of Corvallis and the burden that has placed on the DA's office in terms of reading those recordings, whatever order they are. So, we've been talking about this one for about three years, if I recall correctly, in the past. And John has come forward with it several times. And I think his latest request is kind of, his last, well, his last plea really is based on, he thinks it's an emergency situation and dealing with this right now. So, that's what I remember of the issue. And so it's not the first time that this has come forward to the board.
Okay.
Commissioners, if you would allow me to just interject real quickly, and I would certainly invite any comments from John Haraldson, who is a part of our go-to meeting. When it comes to the actual process, you're correct, and I shared this with the board last week in our work session with the District Attorney, that this particular request did not follow our normal process. That would typically go through what we call our Position Review Committee. The reason that I chose to direct it directly to the board as opposed to going to the Position Review Committee was the urgency of the request, was the nature and extent of the request. And in reality, the Position Review Committee, nor myself, have the authority to approve the DA's request. Only the board has that authority. Commissioner, as you indicated earlier in your comments regarding body worn cameras, the DA in his email to me on June 17th and subsequent meeting between he and I and several others a week later, indicated that the city of Corvallis was going to be finishing the rollout of their body worn cameras by the end of July, which is a significant impact. And I believe that that was what DA Haraldson was operating under that information. And that is a real sense of urgency when you see an agency, especially the size of CPD, rolling out their final, if you will, implementation of body worn cameras. So, if you have an issue with the process, that is the issue that you and I need to deal with. The DA didn't ask to supersede the process. That was an administrative decision that I made. I also did what I could to help expedite some of the hiring of positions already approved in the budget for this biennium. But that was really the extent of what I could do at this point in time. And I felt it was best because of some of the previous context that the board has had over the last couple of years, that this come directly to you. So, I'm the one that is responsible for that decision. And if you feel that that was not appropriate, I'll certainly take that input and feedback from you. But I wanted to at least provide that context.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything to add, John?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to circle back to your request for additional context on the positions that were reportedly added to the District Attorney's office. The, when the question was presented to me at our last meeting, I only had the context that came with the question and did not have any additional context to work with. And the reason that I mentioned that is because the focus on the request, it's before the Board of Commissioners, is on two deputy DAs and a paralegal. And the purpose of that is to respond to a current emergency with regards to our office. And that has, is something that, as the board is aware, has been building for some time. And that is now evident with respect to the fact that we have cases that have gone and charged simply because there are not enough people and hours to review those cases and the statute of limitations have passed. And that is after making significant comebacks on the cases that we're prosecuting. The point that I was trying to make last week was that the majority of the positions added, since I've been District Attorney during the time period that I believe was contemplated, have come in the Victims Services Division. And that those positions are driven by constitutional mandates and that some of the, some of the resources on that are grant funded. And my concern was that without further context, that one might be left with the impression that we had been given a lot of positions. And it just, there's just a lot of information missing. And, you know, that, that can be a little bit challenging, given the fact that with respect to each of those positions, there's a very complex process and information that's provided through HR and through the county with respect to each and every one of those. And I think it's important to understand how the number of 11 positions can be misleading if you don't have more context. When I first became District Attorney, we had four deputy DAs in our office. We had five, but I became DA in that left of agency. When we passed the Health and Public Safety Levy, we added two positions. So there's two new positions right there. The thing is, though, we had lost two positions. So we were originally at seven and then dropped down to five. And then the levy gave us two positions back. So that brought us back to seven. Then, in the 2016 budget process, we added a third deputy DA, and that took us to eight. Now, at the time, we needed to be at 10, but it did take us to eight. There's three positions that you could count. But in reality, what does that mean when you are already down in terms of the actual numbers of where we were at that time compared to where we are today? Those would be the relevant numbers, the actual bodies. If we're counting, for instance, a circumstance where you have an individual who is in one position classification and you have to create another position and you wind up moving that body into that particular position, in essence, you have created another position. But it doesn't necessarily mean that you have a body that has taken the vacant position. Sometimes you may even lose those in the course of that. But yes, you have technically created another position. So, at the end of the day, I would say that we have to be careful not to lose focus on where we are with the specific request. And that is two deputy DAs and one paralegal. And why are we approaching this in a step that goes directly to the county Commissioners? I would say the benefit is that the county Commissioners, under these urgent circumstances, are in the best position to understand the budgetary history and the information that has been provided, that provides the full context for what this need is. That if we were to go through a more traditional process where there isn't a sense of urgency, but there's a need, that it can be vetted, those contexts become a little less relevant with regards to where we are. This is really a, an area of complexity that I have been engaged with the Commissioners for at least four years. And in that- that I have been engaged with the Commissioners for at least four years. And in that sense, it, from my point of view, makes the most sense. If it's a matter of urgency, and I have that opportunity to be able to advise the Board and to express what our needs are and what the most responsible way is to address those needs within the context of, as I had proposed, a slight increase on the Health and Public Safety Levy.
Okay. Thank you for the background. That was part of my question, is just trying to get a better sense of the context. I know, since I've been here, there have been discussions along these lines, but just, it's such a significant addition to the budget that I thought it was worthwhile to have a little more discussion in my conference with the Governor's Office last week. I did, which is mainly talking about COVID-related issues, but I did raise the question of these significant expenses that are either here or coming. And it seems like at the state level, we're not, I don't have a real sense of that this is being discussed and what are we going to do about it. It's happening kind of in a piecemeal basis, partly determined by what law enforcement agencies do and their timetable, which we have obviously no, not much control over. So, I would think it would be worthwhile to continue the discussion with the Governor's Office and with our legislators to see about some state help. And I know this is not a good time to try to add things to any budget, but I think it's a worthwhile discussion. And I think it's a little bit under the radar that, just how much expense comes with body cameras and the review process. So, I appreciate kind of the education along those lines. And I would hope that we would see about getting help from the state. But that's, that's my thought. But any, any other, Annabelle?
Well, you know, I appreciate that, Pat, that those concerns you have. I guess, in my opinion is because we have been discussing this, what point in time is this, as we not only have this health crisis and everything going on, but we also have the fact that we have our local law enforcement already involved in a process, which we did have those discussions with them, and they went right ahead and did it. So, I really feel kind of like, you know, we're behind the gun, that's true. But I really think that the time has come where we have to step up to the plate and move forward on this issue. And I recognize that, Joe, your comments about going ahead and putting it on the agenda and discussing it, because I think it has reached that level where we've got to do something.
Okay. And John?
Very quickly, I think it's also important to note that we are in a place across the country that we, that is different than those places we were contemplating in past budget cycles. We have reached a place where confidence in law enforcement hangs in the balance, and that there is a degree of transparency that the public expects. And our role in being close is something that I think aligns with the principles and values of Benton County. But I do also fundamentally believe that it is time sensitive for us to respond.
Zan?
I would also like to comment that we are currently operating under a District Attorney's memo on curtailing the number of cases that his office can handle based on capacity. So, without these positions and with the addition of all of the CPD body camera, worn cameras, we would base an even further curtailment of the ability to prosecute cases, which has a ripple effect. There's already a pent-up frustration about the fact that we don't pursue charges against many perpetrators of crime locally. It's a complex situation. So, this is part of the balancing act. And I want to reiterate again, I'm very much a broken record on this. My great interest in having a budget analysis of looking at the expenditures across the criminal justice system, make sure that we are investing evenly so that we don't provide too much capacity in one arm and have a four-legged feature that has one leg that's much shorter than the others. So, the, looking forward to that. I know that we can get there. And I do believe that this investment is much needed at this time.
Well, I think we, last Thursday, we approved three positions. My goal here was just to get more information and more context for that decision. So...
Commissioner Malone, just to provide a little bit more clarity, we are asking for formal approval today.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, so the Board, you had a work session with the District Attorney last Thursday. At that point, the Board did share their perspective on this and asked staff to move it forward to a business meeting for formal approval. So, it is in front of you today for formal action by the Board of Commissioners, or if you are not so inclined to move forward with approving it, then providing staff direction as to what you're expecting us to take or to do next. So, there is a motion that is in your packet based on the feedback we received from the Board in last Thursday's meeting.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any other comments?
I don't have that motion before me. Maybe Zan does. I'm not sure.
Yeah. I would move to approve one deputy DA, two physician with a start date of September 1st, 2020, and one deputy DA, one physician with a start date of October 1st, 2020, and one paralegal physician with a start date of September 1st, 2020, in the DA's office.
And I would second that motion.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So, and from our discussion last week, John, you had a timetable of trying to get somebody, one person on board September 1st, and then another on October 1st. Is that, is that the goal?
That is, notwithstanding the hiring processes that can sometimes move us a little slower, but that's our ambitious goal.
Okay.
Ambitious, aspirant.
Okay. Nothing else, we'll move on to other business. Is there any other business we need to consider?
Commissioner Malone, there is an email out there from AOC that's been making the rounds, seeking Commissioners' signatures relative to a letter that AOC plans to send to OSHA and regarding coronavirus and some of the promulgation of regulations that OSHA has actually done in the recent past relative to COVID. I think all of the Commissioners have seen that. I'm just putting it on your radar here today. I do believe that the request is July 23rd by AOC to have Commissioners' signatures on that letter. I don't know if you're so inclined or not, but I did want to bring it up so we can bring closure to this topic. And it looks like Commissioner O'Shea has a comment.
Oh, Zan?
I would like to say that the letter is very specific to the agricultural sector and to the Oregon OSHA requirements that have been put for the, for the health and safety of agricultural workers. We are not the first state to propose these rules. I did see the other day that Virginia has put new rules into place through their equivalent of OSHA. So, it is a fast timeline, but of course, we're operating on virus time, not on typical time. I did put a query out to see whether anyone else had heard complaints from our agricultural community in Benton County about the OSHA proposals. And both Charlie and Kate Porsha responded that they had heard none. And Charlie did query their navigators and folks that are working with our local agricultural community. So, I'm not inclined to make a lot of noise about this to the Governor's Office, but we are not a county that has a lot of big agricultural operators. So, we're probably a little bit of an outlier.
Do you have a recommendation to sign on to the AOC proposal, or?
I would not sign on at this point in time, based on what I know about our constituents. That's why I inquire. But if you have heard otherwise from people here locally about concerns, then I am willing to listen.
I have not.
I have not either.
Okay, so, we'll take no position on that and let the July 23 deadline expire.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks for, I had lost track of that one. So, thank you. Any other other?
Just to remind the Board, we do have a meeting immediately following this meeting, and you do have an agenda for that.
The County Service District.
Okay. So, if there's no other business, I will close the, our Board meeting and move right into the North Albany County Service District.